Good evening, it's 5 o'clock. We're here for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Workshop. We do have a quorum. I am calling this workshop to order. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, and realign the regular schedule or call executive session or order of business any time prior to adjournment. It is not the intention of the City of Bastrop to provide a public forum for the embarrassment or demeaning of any individual or group. Neither is it the intention of the council to allow a member of the public to slur the performance, honesty, and/or integrity of the council as a body or any member or members of the council individually or collectively or members of the city staff. Accordingly, profane insulting or threatening language directed toward the council or any person in the council's presence will not be tolerated. Appreciate everybody coming out. It is now item two, citizens' comments. I have one citizen comments matter comment. Madam Secretary, do we have any others?
No, Mayor.
I will read the single citizen comment that I have from Gilbert Cervantes, 107.
Kamoi Court.
Thank you. I was gonna say is it R. or K. Kamoi Court here in Bastrop. And he wishes to speak. Mr. Cervantes.
Well, thank you all. I know it's kind of a warm day, as we all know. Let's take a few minutes of your time. My name is Gilbert Cervantes. My wife and I, Mary, are the owners of Pete &amp; Son Shoe &amp; Boot Repair. As a member of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Committee, I was able to hear from the community members regarding their interest in recreation for the city of Bastrop. And as a Bastrop native raised, I've seen the tremendous growth in this area, especially in the past few years. I've also seen the lack of indoor recreational facilities that are depriving many of our youth and young adults of organized sports as well as generating revenue for the city. In addition to an indoor recreation center, my vision is to see a Part III nine-hole course. A Part III nine-hole course would provide a schedule-friendly golf experience since many people do not have four to five hours to spare but still desire to play the game. The closing of the Lost Pines Golf Course in the Bastrop State Park of which 1,145 acres was deeded in 1966 by the City of Bastrop to the Texas Parks and Wildlife hinted the chances of an affordable, walkable, and centrally located place in which visitors, seniors, and juniors could learn the game and offer a better future in college education through golf. During the time of the Lost Pines Golf Course was opened, we had many successful girls and boys programs. Bastrop has three 18-hole golf courses, all of which are privately owned with substantial green fee and membership required for those who would like to play the game of golf. This makes it financially difficult for seniors on a fixed income and for the youth in the Bastrop area to afford the exposure to golf. There is a tract of land adjacent to Mayfest Park that would be the ideal for the facility. There are grants and matching grants available to local governments to help with the acquisition and development of public parks and recreation that will assist the purchasing and construction of this course. Possibilities for this property would be a lease agreement, purchase, or partnership with the city, which sends some of this priority is adjacent to the land currently owned by the city in Mayfest Park. First of all, thank you for your time and your service and consideration for this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sheriff. We will move on to item number three, the workshop. And Madam City Manager, are you gonna start it off or is this going to manage her more right off the bat?
I'll just introduce the item because there's been a lot of, I guess, confusion or misinformation swirling as to where we are. So, we've been working on a Parks Master Plan that was a grant by the St. David's Foundation, and this is mostly for the folks out in the internet virtual world. We are to the quote-unquote "end of that plan," meaning to the end of what the consultant's work has accomplished. We are just at the beginning of our work, meaning what we actually want to take from those recommendations and morph into what is a plan of action for the city of Bastrop. So, there's a lot of conceptual drawings in there that I know have caused some consternation, but this is the end of one thing and the beginning of another. The council has not even made a decision as to what it wants to fund or in what priority it wants to fund. So, it's my hope that today you will hear about the plan, but I really want us to talk about what we liked about it, what we didn't like about it, what we would like to prioritize. I think we kind of know, but I want you to say it out loud. And then we need to begin setting some budget considerations. We're already in the budget this year, so we didn't plan to allocate a whole heck of a lot in this budget year, but moving forward, or perhaps some grant opportunities or things like that that we need to consider. So, just for everybody, this is not the final end-all-be-all plan.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Moore, it's your turn.
Thank you very much for your time. I know this was, I know you guys are busy, busy, busy. We did go through a process. We've gone through a lot of conversations, a lot of public meetings, a lot of surveys. Over 1,000 comments came back on that. I think that's fabulous. I toot that horn a lot. Through that came some goals and objectives of vision statement. From that, this plan is about those goals, that vision statement, and the objectives that come with it. From those objectives, and I kind of gave everybody a copy of that, but I mean, it's a living planning document. That's the purpose behind it. It's a guide to get us where we want to go, and it gives staff a planning tool to kind of operate and plan going forward as far as policies and directions on recreational programming and that kind of thing. And then there are suggested implementation steps in it. So, those implementation steps could be as simple as, and I brought this in here, but you know, your goal is to provide pocket parks or a park for people within a quarter of a mile of their home. That's one of the goals, right? And one of those implementation steps are to establish policy that talks about new development and park dedication, how we acquire those things. Those are the implementation steps. So, that's the plan. The plan is, like I said, I can't say it enough, it is truly a living planning document to guide us into where we want to go with our Parks and Recreation System. That's important. We did work with the Parks Board as well as the Steering Committee, and the vision statement is envisioning the creation of a dynamic, all-inclusive park recreation and trail system that will foster and support a deeper sense of community, provide overall health, as well as embrace the unique and historic natural environment of the Colorado River and the Lost Pines Forest. That's what we're trying to go. That's what we're trying to do, is provide that. That's the vision. That's where the big six goals come from. That's where all the goals and objectives happen. So, moving forward with that, tonight, the things that we would like to talk to you about and get some direction on, based on your comments, when we reached out and said, "What are your priorities for 2024?", in that list of things, there were a couple of things that kind of floated to the top. Maintenance was one of them. ADA compliance was one of them, and planning and development policies was the next one. My question to you tonight, are these the items that you guys want to move forward with? Are these the things that you want us to focus on in 2024? And if so, do you have any additional directives with that?
Do you have the priorities that council provided? Do you have them?
In my hand, yes, sir.
In your handout?
Mm-hmm.
Were there any commonalities in what was presented by council to you relative to what their priorities were?
Yes, sir.
And whether they divided into low-hanging fruit, short-term, long-term?
So, as I said, the three things that floated to the top, that was kind of a common theme with all of the comments that came out, the things were maintenance, overall maintenance in the park is important. How do we keep what we do have maintained to a high level, safe, welcoming level? The other one was ADA compliance. How do we make our parks all-inclusive by making and putting some of the work into making the things that we can ADA-accessible? And then the other one was planning and development. Those were three common themes. There were some very specific short terms, like, you know, develop a park improvement and maintenance plan, focus on grant opportunities, those things that, we will focus on those types of things. Always looking for free money. I'll say that again. Always looking for free money. Continue to expand our additional recreational programs. That's something that we wanted. Those are some of the things that came out in the short-term goals. Did that answer your question?
It did. It did. And we also have the recognition, our Recreation Department is relatively new.
Yes, sir.
And we are taking another step toward fleshing that out a little bit more. So, I appreciate that. Yes, ma'am.
So, I have a comment that the council needs to absolutely consider because we've got some, I don't want to say contradictory information, because I think we're all on the same page about maintenance. I think we're all on the same page about resources. But the idea of pocket parks is something we really need to think about. Is it a pocket park or is it connectivity to an improved park or a better park? And I'll give you an example. Today, we have a development that's in front of us that is adjacent to Riverside Grove. We call it the Rosankee Tract. The development is called Reed Ranch. It's a multifamily development. It will have garden-style homes and multifamily. In our current code, it requires a public-private, public realm conversation. The reality of it is, if I go and exact something from that developer, only those residents are really going to use it. I've taken valuable land space. Wouldn't it be better for us to develop a policy that says, "We have Bob Bryant Park up the street. It'd be great that if they don't want to give up the land, they can give up dollars to improve our existing park system." I think we need to include that as an option because pocket parks become very, very expensive to maintain. They are necessary when we're far apart from a regional park. They are necessary when there is lack of transportation or good connectivity. For example, at the Pearl River, where there is not going to be super connectivity to a park in the vicinity, yes, absolutely, public realm requirements. I want us to look at the distance. I think the plan says within 15 minutes. That may be within two miles or something like that. But I really, when we talk about development policies, I really want us to be cognizant about what we're creating. That's it. And that's the seed I'd like to plant for you.
We appreciate it. Councilor, do you have some questions for either the City Manager or for Ms. Moore? Councilmember Meyer.
Sylvia, I appreciate that, and I really understand that because the parks that we have, like at Hunter's Crossing, Pecan Park, I don't even think the public knows that, okay, well, those are parks that we have as a city. So, if we create that again at this new development, it probably will be isolated and thought by, that's for those people. So, I think it makes sense to put that money toward a park where the community does really feel like it is part of the city to use.
As a matter of fact, today, I had a resident at Pecan Park ask me how I can change the code to the locks to not allow people on the trails. And I said, "No, those are public trails. That was a park exemption." But that's the reality. I think what is at the heart of what we're all saying is, "I want good connectivity. I want to be able to walk from one park to the other." And I think Councilmember Kirkland's not here, so I'll pick on him a little bit. I said, "When I lived in Kyle," you know, not even a year ago, because I haven't been here a year, y'all, not even a year ago, I could walk my dog in a five-mile loop pretty easily in an urban area. I lived in the downtown. I wasn't walking along a park, but I had a trail to connect to. Some of that was an improved trail, a sidewalk. Some of that was a granite path. Some of that was just a bar ditch. Jack and I were out of traffic, and we could do a five-mile loop pretty quickly. The connectivity from the Pecan Park trails into the trail system into what is essentially our, either our main core or works its way into the other park, those are the important connection points. Do I need to build another park in another extension of Pecan Park? Probably not. Not if they're asking me to lock the pool and lock the trails. The pool, yes, HOA-maintained. But those are good conversations because maybe further improvements to Fisherman's Park, maybe further improvements to Bob Bryant Park, or Fireman's Park, or any one of the number of parks that we have right now that need a lot of maintenance and attention and need a plan. They need recreation programs, and they just need a plan, period. So, before we like jump on, yes, we need to go exact more in this whole public-private space, because the developer asked me the other day, Pearl River actually asked me the other day, "Okay, we're going to be doing our detention pond, and it's going to be stocked with fish and yada, 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 and it's going to be a public space. When a kid falls in, and God forbid drowns, because you know, kids can drown in very little water, whose liability is that? Is that ours? Is that theirs? Who is it?" And I think the planners who wrote the code had great ideas, ethereal ideas, but the execution of those ideas is where we're going to struggle every single day.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Crouch.
I just wanted to commend Ms. Moore and the staff and the consultants that wrote the report on what a great job that they did as far as writing the report and getting the public response. To get 1,000 responses was pretty overwhelming, and I don't think anybody thought we were going to get that many, but I'm glad that we did.
Whoever thought we weren't going to get that many didn't know Terry Moore. Like, she literally inserted herself in every meeting for six weeks. Like, she didn't even care. If we were talking about flags, she was going to go talk about parks.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm glad we got that many responses, and then the method of it, too, was really nice where it was interactive. You could see what you were putting in and see it on a map, so it was nice to see all that stuff. So, I think that we got a lot of good information on it. I think it brought to light that we need to maintain the equipment that we've got, and that needs to be one of the items that we need to look at now to maybe we put a little bit more money in the budget to maintain the stuff that we've got. It brought to light, I think, the lack of use of the rodeo arena, which I'm sure is going to be talked about some, and I'm glad that that came up because it just showed how much that people in this city like their rodeo arena. So, it brought together a lot of things. The sidewalks and the connectivity, too, because I think the sidewalks are part of the Parks Plan, and I think the sidewalks are done by Parks. So, we need to look at the sidewalk connectivity and how we're spending that money. There was a comment made about the new river loop sidewalk that got put in as a joint effort with TexDOT and the city, and the money that was raised. I know Keep Bastrop County Beautiful got a grant or some funding to spend on sidewalks. And the comment that I heard was that all that money went into that sidewalk for the river loop. And I'm just curious if that's true. There's nothing we need to talk about tonight, but I was just curious if that was accurate or not. And if it did, it could have been an opportunity for us to connect some of the other parks and put, you know, maybe put all the sidewalks on one side of the road or another long section of that, if we'd have spent that money a little bit differently. And maybe there's still some money left in it. I doubt it, but maybe we can still look at that. And then the Old Iron Bridge is a part or part of the Parks Plan. So, that's going to come up, too. And I know we've got grants for that, but I'm glad that the survey made everybody aware of all those things. So, it's nice to have all the information from everybody and get all those citizens' comments that we got.
Thank you, Sheriff. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Crouch, for bringing up the Old Iron Bridge because that was one question. It's, and maybe it's just me that gets confused, because I know we have the rehabilitation that we want as fast as we can get it for the Old Iron Bridge, and then having the Old Iron Bridge Park, it's hard to understand, and people ask, "Oh, so now we're not going to, we're going to restore and put the park?" And it's like, no, that's, those are two different things. So, the Old Iron Bridge restoration is on a, and it's not on this. This is just the park. But priority for us, I believe, is to get the restoration of the Old Iron Bridge capacity to have people on it, and then the Old Iron Bridge Park is down the line, correct? I just want to clarify all that.
So, there's no funding to build a park or, I think we need to think about the bridge, and when we say park, we mean the same thing we talk about in trails. Trails is open space in parks, right? So, the concept of using the bridge as a connectivity of Parks traveling trails, I think that's the way we need to look at the, how the bridge connects to parks.
Yeah. And that makes sense to me, Terry. It's just kind of confusing sometimes when, that's all my point was on that one.
That's my point about the pictures, and so that's why I was very clear yesterday in a roomful of people, and I want to be clear today, when we say we're going to adopt versus accept. And I know it feels like semantics, but I think we're far from adoption, but we are okay for acceptance for us to begin sort of manipulating that plan to have it feel like Bastrop, have some more public input, have some more dialogue as to where we really need to head before we adopt a plan that we kind of feel like we had to adopt the plan because we paid the money for it, and then it sits on a shelf and we don't do anything. I got a lot of plans right now in the office of who was there before me that have no execution to them.
Well, I feel like the plan, the plan itself, as I said earlier, is a living document, right? The plan itself is meant to get people talking. I think it established that. It got people talking about, and how do we keep people talking? How do we keep people talking about what they want and how they can be interested in? That's the engagement part of it. How do we know what people want? We know we have an enormous amount of people that are talking about the rodeo arena. I've loved talking to them because it's information that I'm finding out, that I have the opportunity to educate them about what's really happening and what's really out there, and how can we mesh those things? And as well as the fact that we've got a huge athletic community here that's looking for the same thing. But that doesn't mean it has to be built, one or the other. And I think that's important, that we acknowledge that. None of it can be built without allocation, right? So, I'll circle back to the '24 budget as far as maintenance and that kind of thing, directive from you guys. Is there any particular thing that you want us to focus on? Is there an opportunity for budgetary funding that you want to put in for '24 for us to do some of those things?
Well, that's certainly the devil in the detail. One of the things that the Parks Plan has shown us is the diverse interests that's out there and the diversity of our community, from the rodeo grounds to children's playgrounds. That's all part of our recreational and park program.
Yes, sir.
And I think we need to be cognizant of that and take the opportunity, those funding, the funding may or may not come available, and style what our process is from there. I would rather ask a more encompassing question. Do you, in your mind, after going through the plan and being the advocate for it, do you feel that we have a clear policy that council has set to move a Parks and Recreation Program forward? I will direct that question to our City Manager.
Thank you. And the question was, do I have enough feeling from you that we want to move a plan forward, a particular plan?
Well, I'm wondering if council, over the next several months in anticipation of the next fiscal year, is that we need to establish a clear policy of where the park is going to go. Do you feel, the staff feel, that we have a policy that provides clear directions to staff to meet the diversity of thought that was exhibited in the Parks Plan?
No. And I say that from a, as I told Terry as we were going through some of the, some of the stuff that's been identified in the plan doesn't, I don't want to say this rudely, doesn't involve you. Their policy that we need to bring to the council, i.e. the development policies, all of that good stuff, we can start working on that. The maintenance and operation, that's a conversation between the Public Works Director and Ms. Moore and how we prioritize those things in the budget. Am I going to bring you a slight budget adjustment when we go into our first workshop? Yes, I need to. We've identified some pretty critical needs within the Parks Department in terms of equipment and maintenance. Public Works has two additional people in the budget, and we are needing to identify what's going to happen with those people, notwithstanding as we move forward for a street program. But the third and super bigger piece is where are we in terms of partnerships? For example, if a pool is called out in the plan, is there an opportunity for Bastrop State Park? Is there an opportunity for somebody else? I don't know where that would be, but the state park is sort of the natural. I think as we did with the B-3 code, we sort of all agree that these are the things that we want to work on, and then we just start chipping away at that. The bridge, that's separate and apart. I don't think we're going to have that dialogue in the parks, but certainly, certainly, a lot of what was brought up in this plan is about recreation and programming, a lot of it, and where do I house that? And so, it's going to come from one of three places, I guess I'll tell you. We're going to go borrow money, which may or may not result in an increase of a tax rate, depending on how valuations come next year. It's going to come with an increase to the budget because I got to staff it, and I got to pay the operations of it or partner with somebody to do that. And then we really have to expand our recreation in the Parks and Recreation piece, and that in and of itself is a complicated matter because recreation is under Parks, Parks is over maintenance, recreation is under programming. Do they ever totally agree? No, not in any city I've ever worked in. That's why you have a Recreation Director and you have a Public Works Director, and they never really, truly come meet in the middle. Those are operational challenges for us. Terry and Curtis might meet in the middle, but I don't know. I don't think so. Because it's, and it's not unique to Bastrop. It is not unique to Bastrop. Parks is concerned with mowing. You're concerned whether the grass is tall enough for zumba that day. So, I think we've got a lot. I think my goal for this plan is, yes, they did a lot of good work. They've identified a lot of holes in our program. Unfortunately, it always takes a third party for us to see that. But I'll also remind you that the whole purpose of this was, we can't move forward for grants if we don't have one of these things in place. That's the bigger overarching for me, is we got to have these things, somebody that did a plan like this for us on a shelf in order for us to move forward for any funding opportunities.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, I kind of see it as, you know, can we, it seems like if we did two things. One, have a list of, you know, when we're going to, you know, when we have a new developer coming in and they want to, or we're trying to get them to fund something, I think it would be useful if we gave them a list. You know, here's our wish list, you know, pick one of these things you'd be willing to contribute toward. And that way, if it's something that is more in line with what their values are or what their, what their customers may be interested in, that I think we could get more out of it that way. Instead of saying, "I want you to build me a water tower. I want you to build me a fire station. I want you to build me some sidewalks." You know, let them, let them pick. We've got plenty of things that need to be done, and in my opinion, the more you can, the more input the private sector gets, especially when it's the private sector that's paying for it, the better, you know, the more marketable it'll be. The other thing is, and this may be more toward you, Terry, as... is, and this may be more toward you, Terry, as, you know, there are all these sports organizations and, and recreational type organizations nationally, or whatever. Is there, like, I know with EDC, we, it was all about retail, right? So, we had the retail coach who would, he, he knew which retailers are in expansion mode, and, you know, what their criteria were, and where the good fits would be, and things like that. Is there anything like that with, with sports and rec, where, you know, hey, there's a regional opportunity here for some sport we never even heard of. I don't, you know, it doesn't matter to me, where, you know, hey, this, this organization, they have a hole here, and somewhere in central Texas, or somewhere in the central U.S., or whatever, would be a right place for a, you know, a regional, you know, facility like that. And then you could get the, the sponsors for that sport, or whatever, to help in, you know, creating something like that, especially if there's any kind of interest around here at all. Obviously, that would be a, a fit kind of thing, but if we could be open to those kind of opportunities, and somehow plugged into that kind of thing, seems like that would be something that's out there.
So, there's, there's traps, which is the Texas Recreation and Parks Society, that's the state society, and then there's NRPA, which is a natural, national organization that kinda keeps everybody together, provides standards and things like that. As far as partnerships are concerned, I, I could not agree with you more. Partnerships is what keeps us strong. If we are working in silos, we're not doing the good work that we can do. So, I, I feel like that we're open enough to be even creative, really creative, in how we can partner with different organizations. You guys made some statements earlier about sponsorships, and, and I think those conversations sparked some interest. So, if we perceive, if we give out the perception that we're interested in doing whatever it is that we're wanting to do, people will hear. People are interested in Bastrop right now, so they're listening. So, these conversations, I think, will spark some of that, and open to it.
So, what we would normally do is put out an RFQ, and say, "We are interested," and this is what, these are the types of firms we're interested in, those people who have provided, those people who have done that. And I know there was a chuckle when I said Waterburger Field, and I said those kinds of things, but as I told somebody, those are licensing agreements that end up paying for the building itself. The, so, the process moving forward is, we would put out an RFQ, get, or even an RFP at that point, if we know we've identified land where we want things to go. The beauty about a sports facility is, it is one of those few things that will pay for itself, because it has five different funding mechanisms available to it. It is an identified hot fund expense. It is one of the identified items that hot funds can fund. You have tax increment, you have PID, you have grants, and then you have also a general fund, or even any special allocation of dollars. So, there's a multiple variety, and you can layer all of those things together, so that when a developer wants to come in and partner and build a $40 million facility, there's an ROI that's automatically built in for them, and the benefit to the city is, we're not in the business of managing soccer fields and those kinds of things. We don't do a good job at it. The private sector certainly does, especially when it deals with admission and getting those things in. That's the kind of partnership we have to be willing to do with a two-person recreation department.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things. One is just a point of privilege to bring up first. Ms. Franklin, could I get some bottles of water from you, please? Thank you. And the second is for Terry, and I noticed we have some short-term items that say no, or low cost. So, can we perhaps maybe start addressing that, because maybe that's something that we can do immediately without having...
Absolutely. So, in the initiative, in the implementation steps, is what you're referring to?
Yes, on the, the responses, you say short-term, low or no-cost items.
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am. And, and in the, in the plan, in the implementation steps, we, we do the same thing. There's, there are planning steps that we can move forward with, if we're told this is what you want us to do.
Let the record reflect that Mayor Paul Jim Kirkland arrived here at 5:16, and he has his mic on.
I would caution you against sitting in a 140-degree attic for an hour. It causes issues. So, on, my thoughts on the, kind of the, the low-cost options, I kinda have some things written, and, and kind of in order, I think, that are appropriate. And, and thank you, Ann. The first one is to evaluate the policy changes to lay out park lands as we get development, and making sure that, as per the recommendations, you know, it's, it's not all floodplain, and, you know, that kind of thing. The best practices for that is, is absolutely something that we should take up, as soon as, you know, you've reviewed it, and you're ready to do that.
Yes, sir.
The, the next thing would be to evaluate any substantial maintenance needs in the park, anything that represents, you know, operational repair, or something that we already have, but is, is either about to fail, or, you know, failed, and that we should address with, with some small dollars to, to fix. The third one, I'll call it a sidewalk master plan, but it's, and, and I think it's something that, that you could do. I mean, that it's, no, I'm serious. You know, look at a map, look at the connectivity, look at where we have the sidewalks, and, you know, make those maps, and then, you know, well, goodness, where can we connect some of these? And, and then there would be a policy element to it, that instead of the, the B-3 code requirement that you put a sidewalk in front of your structure, sidewalk to nowhere in some cases, that perhaps it could be a requirement that if a sidewalk in front of your development doesn't make sense, that it can get paid into a sidewalk connectivity fund, and you can, we can establish by policy what that dollar amount should be, and then we can use that to pay for the connectivity that we don't have in sidewalks, where, we have the sidewalks, but then you, you know, if you, when you hear the city manager talk about walking her dog, you know, that's a pretty compelling story, right?
Sure.
And so, that's something that I think that we can start on imminently, is, is the idea of sidewalk connectivity and policy changes that will allow us to pay for that on an, on an ongoing basis. And then, the, the last thing regarding, and this is a pool and a rec center, kinda combined in, in some manner, and that is that this is going to get, it, it would seem paid for by one of three ways. The first one is that we have some, some sort of grant program that, that we can get access to. There's a lot of things recommended in the Parks Master, Master Plan, but I think, you know, a good thorough review of, of what might make sense there is, is a good thing. The second area that could help fund it would be any of the development projects, the, the bigger ones that are coming up. There's potential opportunities in that, and so, the city manager could bring those to us for discussion, when those types of opportunities may expose themselves. And then the third one, which is kind of the, the least desirable one, is that you raise taxes to do it, and I just don't see that one as, as the viable one. So, you know, I think that it is gonna come to us either through grants, or through some interesting development agreement that we don't even know about yet. And those are kind of my things, is that, you know, looking for opportunities to, to, to change policies, so that we allocate better parkland in the future, policies for, for sidewalks that don't necessarily require that you build the sidewalk to nowhere, but instead you contribute, so that we're building sidewalks to somewhere. And, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. As I stated earlier, the, the plan certainly shows the diversity of wants, needs, as well as priorities. And when we started looking at it, there are three different pots that they fall into, M and O, capital, or programmatic. And, but I, I guess my question, seeing that there's no lights on, I guess my question is, are you looking for a specific direction from council? We're not prepared to, to adopt the plan, but we are certainly prepared, to the city manager's point, to accept the plan, so we have something to show when we do go out for those grant opportunities, and partnership opportunities, and sponsorship opportunities. And, and I guess I should ask this council, this question of council. Council, do y'all have any suggestions on what sort of policy, or guidance, that we want to give our city staff to work on now? I think it's, I think it's imperative that we provide them with direction, whether or not we have the funding in place, but at least provide them with some sort of direction on where we would like to see this process go. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Before, sorry, there's just a few things I want to bring up before I even would consider accepting, and definitely not adopting, but, and I think a thousand surveys is wonderful. However, I've been contacted by so many people, and we all know not everybody's on Facebook, and they're not, so if we could reach out to the community more, too, for input, I would, I think they would appreciate that, and I would really love their input.
In response to that, we're always open to input. I had, I had someone ask me today, "How do you feel about, would it be a good idea for us to go and tell people what we think?" And my response, it was, "You will never, ever hear me say, 'Don't tell people what you think,'" because that's the only way we can translate what, what's going on out there. And it's also the only way that we can translate what their perception is, and what reality is, by talking to people.
Right, sure.
So, reaching out and doing a survey, there's, there's some opportunities for that as well.
And I appreciate that, Terry, and, and I know you go above and beyond to try to reach out. However, you do so much, but you can only do so much.
Amen.
Because you need all of us, just like with the streets, you know?
Amen.
You need all of us to reach out.
Right, and I did not, let me just clarify, Terry Moore was not the reason there were a thousand. There were 17 people, Parks Board, Steering Committee, as well as people in our community that were spreading the wealth. I mean, they were sharing information cards, because, do I know a thousand people? Just kidding.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, but I agree with you. And, and there are worlds of people that are in this section that I don't even know exist. So, it is imperative that we continue to ask people what they, what they want.
Thank you for that. All right, council, I'm, I'm gonna throw out a couple of things. I'm, I'm a big preventative maintenance guy, and I, I would really love to see an inventory of our current equipment that we have, and what we need to do to bring it up to some level of standard that's acceptable, because quite frankly, it's not. And I want to include the rodeo grounds into that also, to inventory what we need to there, to do there to bring it up, to bring it up to standards, to, to make it more attractive to, to the people who utilize that, or that can utilize it. Does anybody have any issue with that inventory as part of a general direction to the city manager and staff? I would also like for us to, and I've, we've already spoken to the city manager about the lack of policy that, that city council has. I'd like to entertain some discussion and consideration of policy to, to put us in the right direction to meet this, this growing demand, these, these priorities, these needs, these wants that the community has expressed to us. And again, because of some of the dialogues out there, I want to include the rodeo into that discussion also, the rodeo grounds. And finally, the last thing is, is that y'all know much better than we here on council do, where we should direct our prioritization, utilizing the resources that we, that we currently have, and where we can reach out to generate additional resources to, again, meet the wants and needs and priorities of our community. And that's just kind of some general direction to, to city staff. To council, do y'all have anything that y'all like to add or subtract from these suggestions?
I would, Mayor, I would like to add on that point. So, this is my first rodeo, literally, my first Bastrop rodeo. I shouldn't say that. This is about my sixth city council rodeo, so, city rodeo. But this is my first Bastrop rodeo, and I will say, I am disappointed and ashamed at the condition of Mayfest Park. And, and that's an understatement. And so, your directive to me was figure out what we're gonna do with that, even if it just means fix the doggone chairs, and not expand anything else, even if it just means fix the doggone lighting and exposed wiring. And so, to that, you have an item that is going to be presented. It was expected to be this coming Tuesday, but it won't be until the following council meeting, where we've discussed the visit Bastrop budget, and we've discussed the reallocation of those funds. Because the arena is a qualified hot fund expense, we'll just reprogram some of that to make those necessary repairs, and that'll be on your agenda, as per your directive to me. And then, the rest of that is, we do, as I stated, we will have some dollars in the budget. You, you have some dollars available to spend in this existing budget. It's not an additional tax rate or anything like that. It's available dollars that we will put toward this identified inventory of critical needs. I was down at the Splash Park with my grandchildren. It's disappointing there as well. I was down at the Parks. It's disappointing there as well. I tried to do exercise at Fisherman's Park. It's disappointing as well. So, I know we haven't put the dollars, I know we haven't put the resources to it, and it's about time that we do. It, it's about time that we sort of stop the craziness of trying to share staff. You know, is the public works guy, is he setting up and tearing at the convention center, or is he mowing downtown, or is he doing the one of 2,500 things we have Curtis' guys trying to do? None of that makes any sense. What does make sense is that our organization is lean, but that we do have identified priorities and the people to do that. Everything can't be a number-one priority, and I feel like that's how we're operating today, and so, it's no wonder that we're inefficient. It's no wonder. So, we do owe you a plan. We do owe you some budget considerations, and you will see that on your 8/22 or 8/23 agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Meyer.
Yes, I just have a question. As far as, because since we're in a workshop about this conceptual plan, there are some issues that I do have on specific things, so would you like for me to bring them up now, or do you want to wait?
Please.
Okay. Let me get my book out. Actually, there's two, two big items that I have.
Okay.
One, and we discussed this, it was when we talked about the survey, when Stannick, I believe, was in the back, and I noticed the courts, mainly Fisherman's Park and Bob Bryant, that are, they're at least dual-use right now. We have tennis and pickleball. However, on these plans, it only says pickleball, and I brought that up to him.
Okay.
But that wasn't corrected, so I don't think we need a single function. I need to, we need to get as much as we can, mainly for the youth, too, is what I'm looking for.
That's an easy fix.
So, that, that was one thing, to not be just specific, single purpose. And the other is, in the, the master plan, everything has one picture that we narrowed it down to. However, when it comes to Mayfest, I know we had one plan, which was four soccer fields, but then we added the appendix with the rodeo. So, I would like to see the one picture be the rodeo grounds up there, and not the four soccer fields, because I know this is online, and all people are seeing online, because I pulled it up today, or is four soccer fields. And that's, so, that's probably why you're getting a lot of calls, too. But I...
Oh, the draft. You're talking about...
The draft, right. So, the online draft only shows four soccer fields, and then a lot of people don't know that we added the rodeo grounds to the appendix, and a lot of times, you're not gonna look in the back anyway, so it would be clearer, I think, for people, if they saw the one picture, to be the rodeo. The other plan, Terry, that would, you know, we had two.
Right, yes, ma'am.
And that one got dumped, so that's the only one I'm suggesting we have is the pic, that picture.
Yep.
That's it.
You're suggesting that be the conceptual plan, actually, it's B?
That, that plan with the rodeo, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Crouch.
Ditto for the, for the conceptual drawing. I, I agree with that. Another thing, as far as the, you talked about staff, additional staff, and maybe two more people.
Yes, sir, in public works. Yes, sir, in public works.
I think that's really important, because some of the discussion that's come up during the rodeo conversations has been, who do they call to manage that? And who's managing the rodeo arena? Is it the Family Rodeo Association? Is it the city? Is it the county? And when I was trying to call around to get information on who's in charge of the animal rescue, so, and the fires, all this stuff has kind of been a perfect storm for the rodeo arena as far as bringing attention to it, but that arena is one of the animal rescue places, so when there's a fire like we just had again, that's the place where the animals go, or that's one place that the animals can go. But nobody really knew who's organizing that. When I started calling around, even the people that were very involved with the rodeo arena didn't really know the specific person. Was it the, and I've got all the organizations listed here, but just, is there some way we can put that on the website?
Yes, sir.
Or on our city website to say, if you want to lease the rodeo arena for an event, call this person, whether it's you or whoever's managing the rodeo arena? Because nobody knows and it's not listed anywhere. So maybe that's one of the, if that's what this meeting tonight's for, is to identify some stuff, because it wasn't really clear to me what we were gonna talk about, other than parks. So if you're just looking for specific things, that came up as a very important one. Who is doing that? Who do we call? Who takes care of the animals? Do they really take care of the animals? And if, for an example, if the rodeo arena went away, what was Plan B for that option? Where did all that stuff end up at besides the rodeo arena?
So, as far as the rental and the operation of the rodeo, Mayfest Park, it is a rental that is handled through recreation, handles all the rentals. If more times than not, an event at Mayfest Park with the arena becomes a special event, there's five hundred people or three hundred people, that becomes a special event. Special event permits are filed online, you can, you know, it's an online process, same way with the Mayfest, the, like, pavilions, any parks, anything like that, you can now go online and rent any of those facilities. Curtis' staff maintains the parks, and so what, like, if it's a special event, we meet as a special event team, and every department, fire, electric, planning, all of us get together, and everybody has their directive from that special event. His staff takes care of that park. As far as the emergency management is concerned, if that was not a space, it was no longer available for that, that would be included in the emergency management plan. So the city has an emergency management plan that they have an answer for where they would take animals for...
But it was my understanding that's shared with the county as well.
It...
So it's city, county, both. The county doesn't own the rodeo arena. The county doesn't own the rodeo arena, I don't think the county maintains the rodeo arena, so I guess that's where some of the confusion was, is who is the entity that's in charge of all of that? And then are we sharing that with county, federal? There was just a lot of questions that came out of all the rodeo discussions in the past two weeks, at least that I've been getting, and when I started calling around to try to figure out who did what, there was a lot of information about it.
So anytime anybody asks about any rentals of the park, tell them to call, there's a number on our recreation page on the website, and there's where you can call to rent pavilions and parks. Same thing with special events, you go to the planning page, they're filed for special event permits, same way online. The emergency management stuff is out of my lane.
Okay. The pickleball, I, there's a huge pickleball group, everybody knows that here in Bastrop now. Pickleball was kind of striped at Fisherman's Park, it's kind of striped at Bob Bryant Park. There's a huge pickleball complex now at Tahitian Village. I think it's in the city limits. Is that something that the city, maybe that's something that the city can look at as far as, it's such a popular sport, maybe that's one of the things that we need to look at as far as a pickleball complex, along with our soccer complex, and our softball field complex, and our little league field complex? And maybe that's a simple one that we could do. As far as, if we're looking at land purchase options or things that are already existing, why couldn't we look at picking up that pickleball court, the ten pickleball courts up there and not have that private, have that part of the city?
That would be a discussion with that private entity.
Yes, I know that.
It could also be a discussion about the partnerships that we spoke of earlier.
Exactly. I mean, but that's, if that's some of the stuff that you want to hear us talk about today, then that was, that's been one that I get a lot of comments about, is, why does all the pickleball people now gotta go to that facility? And it's because none of the city parks have that type of facility available. It's just a re-stripe tennis court. And are people really playing tennis, or are they playing pickleball?
They're playing both.
I know, because I drive by and look, but the majority of it is pickleball right now. And sure, we can't get rid of the one tennis court that we have, or two, and just let the pickleball take over, and then nobody can play tennis. So maybe we need to look at expanding that, since there is such a demand for that right now, and I don't think it's gonna slow down in the near future, it's just such a popular sport. Maybe that's one thing that we need to look at, adding in our parks is maybe some more pickleball things. And then the rec center and the golf course, par three golf course. There's, I think there's land options available. Maybe we can convert Mayfest and put a par three golf course, it doesn't take that much land to do a par three golf course. But that's something else that we, I think that we should look at. There's definitely a strong group of people that would like to see that. It's a shortened amount of time to play par three golf versus a nine-hole round of golf, and that's just something that the city doesn't have, that maybe we could look at as an option for our parks. The maintenance program, I'm sure Curtis has, they do an excellent job of maintaining everything. Is there a regular program to where they're walking and making a list of all the existing equipment and putting it on the list? I mean, that's, that was in our short-term priorities. Make a list of all the equipment, fix all the broken stuff, if it's rusted and falling apart, take care of it, fix it. Do we need to replace it? It's a hundred and eight outside today. One of the short list things was shade structures. Absolutely, we need shade structures, even if it's not a hundred and eight outside. To put a little kid on playground equipment without a shade cover over it is not good. I think all of our playground equipment ought to at least have a shade structure over it. Every elementary school, every junior high school now that is built has a shade structure over their playground equipment, and I think it's, we're not doing our kids a safe justice by not having a shade structure over our...
I think that's why we suggested we do an inventory of our equipment and see what's lacking in there. So I'm in complete agreement with you on that, sir.
And I agree. I just, I'm just kind of spitting stuff out, since this is all an open thing, and it wasn't really a specific thing.
Keep spitting, keep spitting, we need to hear it. I will tell you that our current facilities superintendent, manager, whatever, I think it's facility superintendent, is, has put in his resignation. He wasn't with us very long. We do have some very qualified applicants already in the pool that we will be interviewing, but there is a difference between a facility and what we are considering facilities. This particular facilities manager also is responsible for not only this building, but also every piece of park equipment. If we were a smaller city, I could see how that was possible. I'm not sure how we're gonna get to that point with the current. We'll work it through this coming year, but I anticipate some restructure happening here very quickly.
Another thing is marketing. So how are we, how are we marketing our parks and our arenas and our, the show barn? Can we do a better job of that? I know personally, I've, there's, I've brought people to the table to lease the rodeo arena for two years, and they still don't have a lease. Why is that? And I just don't understand why we don't even have that under contract. The other thing is, the show barn is an excellent place to have music venues, or, we were just talking about washer tournaments and...
Or shoe washer.
Cornhole.
Cornhole.
Cornhole, cornhole. I don't know why I couldn't think of that. That's a good venue, we could have activities like that, and have people go up and use Mayfest Park under that covered pavilion up there, and I, we're not, I don't think we're marketing it. I don't think we're marketing that arena for weekend dances, music, any number of things. I just don't think we're marketing that, and that's why...
We do not currently have a marketing strategy to market our facilities.
Say that again?
We do not have currently a marketing strategy to market our facilities.
And maybe that's something we need to look at, because the more people we can bring into that atmosphere, the more activities that people have to do at night and on the weekends and after work. And we have the facilities, those facilities available, but we're not using them. And then it's not until you start taking it away that you, everybody comes out and says, why are you taking that away? We're using that. But we, I think if we did a better job of marketing those, the things that we do have, that we would get more people and more activities in them, and more participation in all the events.
There's a, there's a marketing and branding component that we talked about, and in Corpus Christi, for example, we went through an entire, and it wasn't a massive branding campaign, but every single park, the sign had to have the brand for the city of Corpus Christi, and that would resolve. I'm at Pickon Park, and is this a city trail, or is this a city park, or is it whatever? Because all of our signs look the same. We don't have a consistent park brand. Ours was a little guy on some leaves surfing. We were on the water, we had palm trees, it was on a palm frond, I think. So, just sort of a play. We talked about, for your Rangers thing, we did like a really skinny lob-lolly pine thing, but that's things we generated. But as we move forward and begin to identify what's ours, what is a public component, those are one of the things that are needed. And before I get to a marketing plan, I gotta be able to figure out what I have. And even as early as last week, we were still uncovering acres that, oh, that's ours too. Oh, wow. How'd that happen? You know, and so imagine my frustration, I have very little hair on the top of my head left after ten months here. So, you know, we're, that's why I'm saying, we've accepted a plan, we know there's some, we know there's some major, major issues we still have to dive into, but yes, marketing and branding, branding being the first one.
And that is in the plan.
That came up in the plan, yeah, absolutely. To make all of them consistent with the logo and the lettering and the signage, that was in the plan, so excellent idea for that. Another thing, just really quickly, and I'll quit. I think it's really important that we have some type of playing field complex. Is the best place for it on Mayfest Hill, that's an option. It's also a good option for the par three golf course. Do we need to look at other land venues? Maybe we need to purchase or get other people involved with a partnership? Absolutely. If you look at my kids, I'm older, so my kids are older, but they started Round Rock, Flugerville, Georgetown, all those towns were big sports towns for kids. They had the complex that you could have tournaments at. They're money makers, they bring people to the hotels, they bring people to your city. They bring quality residents that want good areas for their kids to play and participate in sports, and we really don't have that. I don't think that the soccer fields on the school district land is, it's an option that we're using, but is it a good option? No, I don't think it is. I think it's dangerous to, for the people pulling out on Highway 95, into the traffic at going to Buc-E's or A&amp;M, or wherever everybody's going on Highway 95, I think it's an accident waiting to happen. We need to get a designated sports playing field complex, and it could be, the fields can be multi-stripped for soccer, football, baseball, just any kind of activity, and that would really benefit Bastrop if we had fields like that. The little league field complex, we do a great job of maintaining that. I don't know if our staff maintains that fully, or if the little league has a lot to do with that. If we are maintaining that, it would be nice if the infield's were in better condition, and that was one of the lists too. If you, I think having the grass not a crisp edge going into the dirt, if your field looks good, then the kids are gonna feel good about playing on a field. If they look sloppy, then it's just how you perceive things. If we can put out quality fields and quality playground stuff, then it's just a better atmosphere.
It's my understanding that inside the fence is the little league's responsibility.
And then one more was the Fireman's Park. Is that, is that a park, because that is one park that doesn't get used a whole lot? When you drive by it, there is occasionally softball, people practicing little league baseball. Is that a, is that a park that we can have turn into a multi-use playing field? Can we make it a softball field, soccer field, football practice field? It's not very big, but maybe we re-stripe it or reconfigure the fencing somehow, where we can use it for multiple sports?
And there has been a history of that, as in my previous life, we would, we would play soccer in the outfield, because that's the only field in the community that has lights.
Another thing is the lighting, but that's a whole nother thing. We can look at, look at the lighting on the fields too, but I think having a complex is one of the, one of the big things, and that was most of the things on my list that I've generated since I've lived in Bastrop.
Sounds like I keep hearing from the council to get an RFP together to attract people who will build a sports complex. We've had discussions with two over the last couple of weeks. So we will get on that. I will put together a potential funding package. We'll discuss it in executive session before we put an RFP out on the street.
Thank you. Is that it, Councilmember Crouch? Thank you so much. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Going back to the livestock at the rodeo, being housed there for emergencies, there actually was livestock there for the Powderkeg Fire, so that was great to just be able to have that access. I don't know, and that's not in the city, of course, I don't even know if it's Bastrop or Smith or where the animals are, but anyway, that was a wonderful thing to have that availability. And then going back, just a little while ago, Terry, when I asked about the Mayfest plan to be replaced with the rodeo, like the soccer fields, in the conceptual master plan, I would also like to refer to the 2018 conceptual plan that the city spent $10,000 on to reimagine the 26-acre space at Mayfest Park. That plan is very appealing, so I would ask that we also look at that plan to consider Mayfest Park also. It was from the 2018, the last plan they did, the 2018.
That's a nice drawing.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Well, counsel, it seems like we've provided city manager and staff some direction. Are we clear on the, are you clear on the direction thus far, Madam City Manager?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say, Ms. Moore, I'd like to say how much I appreciate the efforts of you, your Parks Board, the fact that three years ago, our, our recreation program is, what, three years old now? Two years old? I'm just, I'm trying to advance my age evidently more so than what I should. And you've taken it to, to, to great heights thus far and hopefully that, that we can establish policy would help with the programs as well as the capital, as well as the equipment that we have out there and the care and concern of that equipment. So thank you for your efforts.
Yes, sir. May I say that it is a, the growth is a testament to need.
Agreed, agreed. All right, counsel, I don't see any other lights on. We've provided direction.
We have one other citizen comment. I do want to give the council an update, too. Apparently the folks, some folks using the rodeo arena decided they needed to wire additional RVs and broke into the breaker box. And the arena will be out of power tonight until we rewire it.
Oh, my goodness.
Exciting.
Yes, 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 yes. Hi, I'm Carrie Fussler. I live at 1903 Main Street and I'm the current chair of the Parks Board. And I appreciate us having this workshop. And feels, in the back row, it feels kind of like a limp rag, honestly. It's been a very exciting time and big ramp up and lots and lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of participation. And we're ready to go. And we have that beautiful grant matrix and I would, the direction we would love to ask for is some staff time to work on those grants immediately. They're all like lined out for us. That's one of the most like action-packed, ready-to-go, next action steps that we can work on is staff time to work on those grants would be most appreciated. A lot of these discussions, I mean, they're great and we've also like, we've been having them, we've been having these same talks. So I don't know, it's a little frustrating. All the Parks Board members are, a lot of Parks Board members are back there and it's just a little, it's a little, it's a little frustrating, honestly. So I just hope we can get some movement and some grant writing and some, some real support for all this stuff. I know I'm not very eloquent, I'm a little bit emotional, but it just, it feels a little lackluster. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fussler. Councilmember Plunkett?
Madam City Manager, do you feel like you need authorization to use staff time for grant writing from us?
No, I don't need authorization to use staff time. What I do need is a, is a plan. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of grants laid out. And so to the Parks Board, I feel you're, I feel you. I'm only here 10 months, y'all. Give me a little bit. You'll have an RFP before the end of the month, so I promise that. Two things is you got to have something adopted to go after a grant and you have to understand what grant you're going after because it'll have a match and it'll have a deliverable and it'll have some management of the grant. If council as a priority says we want a sports complex, go forth and make that happen. Yep, I can put that on the street pretty quickly. End of the year, we can have some things ready to go in a package, ready to go. If we're looking for a grant that says go and create seven miles worth of trails, when I submit the grant, I'm going to need to know where those trails go. If I submit a grant that says I want a rec center, I'm going to need to know where the land is that I'm going to use as an in-kind donation for the rec center. So there's some things that have to be informed by the council. I think at your next meeting, you're scheduled to, this is still slated for acceptance? Yes, at your next meeting, you're still slated for that. I think at that point, we can begin to have, you know, a little bit of more dialogue, but I will certainly work with the Parks Board and I'll certainly work with Terry to identify those things that are realistic and now, like, we already have it. We already have a need at Delgado Park or we already have a need at Fireman's Park or the areas where we already have those things that can happen tomorrow. So just, you'll see some stuff, I promise. We're going to have like, and, and then the other thing is, is I don't need an engineer for every doggone thing that we do. We used to build parks as part of community building exercises. I'd go order it from Kid Craft and a park went up in a weekend. Like, those are all creative things we do as a community that I don't necessarily need an engineer to plan out and take seven months and $200,000 to do. I can go put that $200,000 toward playground equipment, so.
Thank you, ma'am. We definitely want to be a proactive council and we will continue working toward that It appears we have another citizen comment. Mr. Jackson, come right on up.
Thank you. I am Doc Jackson, 163 Tahitian Drive here in Bastrop. And I just wanted to thank you all for working with Parks and Recreation and putting that into this master parks plan and to the discussions that I've listened to this evening. It's long overdue. It's something that the community has wanted for years to try to develop and do. And I'm glad that we're taking the step to move forward. I mean, we've had so many master parks plans and I've worked on many of them. And we have, they've ended up on the shelf. And it's just time, I think, to start taking some more action to move forward with this. And I think the citizens will applaud you for what you are doing and looking at this. And because there's a history, you know, I mean, in our county and other places, other people are moving forward with Parks and Recreation. It's helping to grow our communities. It's helping to bring quality development into the communities because the quality of life is something that's very important. And I think that we're beginning to see that that can help. It can also be profitable to us, as Councilmember Crouch was mentioning and others, you can also get some revenue from that as well. But I think the overall health and fitness part of it and the fact that it will help to develop and grow our community is something that we, we've long overlooked and I think it's time to move forward with it and make it happen. And I just applaud you for discussing it and I hoped to hear more of it and hope to be involved in, you know, if you have questions, if I can help in any way. As a lot of you know, my field was Parks and Recreation. I was a Parks and Recreation Director. And as a former council member, I pushed and pushed and pushed for Parks and Recreation. And as a private citizen, I still want to do that. So if I can help in, and prior Parks Board member also, but if I can help in any way to do that, I'll let me know. I still have contacts in the field. Terry is doing a wonderful job and I'm really pleased with what she's doing. And I, you know, offer to provide any type of assistance I can since I've worked, you know, I have worked on many master parks plans, not only in Bastrop, Elgin, Smithville and throughout the country. So let me know if I can help with anything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No further comments, no other lights on? I'll entertain a motion to, oh, oh, sorry. Yes, sir, Mr. Gray.
I just, I didn't, I didn't want to, in, in the meeting without recognizing Terry and Curtis and his group and, and the Parks Board. I, I felt like when Carrie came up and spoke that we were ignoring them, but the Parks Board, that was the first board that I ever served on and I think it's the best board of all of them. No prejudice to it, but it, parks are very important to the city to grow and, and to be healthy. And we, we need, we need the Parks Board. If there's anything that we can do as a council to get funding, which is the reason for the master plan, so we can apply for grants, if there's any, if we need to hire a grant writer or have that part of the plan, let's do that, too. If we can't do it with in-house staff, if we need to go outside source and get a grant writer to help with that, then let's do that. Because none of this is going to happen unless we make it happen. So, and I think that you've got full commitment to everybody up here to improve our, our parks. So don't think that we don't appreciate everything that you guys do and there's just a lot. And I, we ought, I think we need more staff, personally. What are we going to pay for?
I'm happy to bring a budget amendment.
But if we need a grant writer, let's, 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 let's get one to help.
So we have several grant writers on retainer who, we have several. And a lot of the, a lot of the focus has been on water and wastewater over the last several years. And it has a place. I'm not, obviously, we wouldn't be in the growth position that we're at without water and wastewater. But as I've told the council many, many, many times, we left a lot of things on the table over the past several years, from additional police, additional fire, and parks and rec facilities. So we are in a bit of ketchup. Not to mention staffing. I mean, we're in like major ketchup in that regard. But I've already gotten up two RFPs for athletic complex proposals that a couple of cities around the state are doing. I know for a fact that I will bring you an application or a package that includes hot tirs, PID, and any potential property the city has as an in-kind. So we're gonna get there.
Yes, we are.
Yep, okay. Just, but thank everybody for all of your work and we just, we, we recognize that, which it's growing pains and we just, we just have to grow and have the pains and then take care of them. So thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Meyer?
Well, since we're talking about parks and recreation, I just want to remind everybody to go up on top of the hill, Mayfest Park, 76th Annual Homecoming Rodeo. Go up, see the rodeos. Saturdays, the parade, 10 o'clock down on Main Street.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Crouch, your light is still on? Do you have another comment? All right, I'm going to take a chance. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank y'all very much.